Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming in on this beautiful day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we call the roll, please?
Augustine Alley?
Here.
Barsha?
Here.
Dool?
Here.
McCumber?
Here.
Schmuckle?
Here.
McManus? Here. Corn?
Here, all present and accounted for. First order of business is roll call of the board members. Oh, we did that. I feel better. Public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would care to address the board?
He asked me. Well, never mind.
There is. Good evening. My name is Dr. John Van Wagenen. I'm the superintendent of Traverse City Area Public Schools. Want to first take a moment to thank Garfield Township and Supervisor Corn for all his leadership and thought partnership with so many things that we have with the school district and involve the township. It's just awesome to have a partner that Chuck has, and it's really, for me, in the over the past four years, has been a very, very thankful thing to have. So, thanks for your work, Chuck. Wanted to just come for a moment and let you know about our upcoming bond. On August 6th, we have a bond that is on the ballot. It is a 3.1 mil rate. It's no increase. It's the same mil rate that we've had for 26 straight years in the district. The bond rate across the state, the average, is 5.4. We are 40% lower than the state average, so we have a very, very low bond debt compared to the rest of the state. Key things for this bond are really having our students be safe, warm, and dry. When we look at data from our parents, they say, "We want to make sure our schools are safe." What can we do with making sure that we have all the proper things to have our students with doors and secure vestibules and those things, but not making them prisons still? How can we make them warm, learning environments, but put all the latest technologies, those things in for that? Next is warm. We have 26 boilers that have to be replaced across the district. And even West Senior High School in this township is 27 years old. By the time this bond happens, it'll be over 30 years old, the boilers. And we have replacements for hot water heaters and those things. And West Middle School, opened in 1970, also has a lot of key things with the boilers to be replaced, as well as many other updates, lockers, things like that, that are original to the building. And the last is really dry. We have roofs across West High School, has a partial roof replacement in it. And we have the drive to actually be completely repaired and done, to have it go in the proper direction, finally, with proper parking at West High School. And so, we have a lot of projects that are in this, but we just want to make sure to let you know, again, it's keeping that same mil rate we've had for 26 years. It is not an increase. It's keeping that same thing, trying to be very fiscally responsible and stretch every dollar we can, but making sure we're putting the investments in our buildings that we need to, to keep them sound for the next 30 and 40 years. So, just wanted to make sure to let you know that. We have buses in this. It's really a nuts-and-bolts bond, nothing fancy, just trying to make sure that we're keeping the taxpayers' investments up and having a great school district for our kids. So, with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else for public comment? We'll come back to the board for review and approval of the agenda and statements of conflicts of interest. Any conflicts? We have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion and support to approve the agenda as presented. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion passes. We have an agenda. Next item is the consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therewith and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. We have minutes, May 14, 2024, regular meeting, recommend approval. Bills, general fund, $102,516.8, recommend approval. Gordy Frazier, Developers Escrow Fund, stormwater reviews, sidewalk assessment, utility plan review, oversight and closeout, $9,828.50. General Utilities, $22,877.50. General Township Hall Boiler AC Unit, $540. Park Funds, DNR Trust Fund, $12,300, with a total of $45,546, recommend approval. MTT update, receive and file. ARPA Project Tracker update, receive and file. Consideration of appointing Jamie Douglas as a code enforcement officer, recommend approval. Consideration of Resolution 2024-17-T regarding retention of meeting records on the township website, recommend approval. Consideration of Resolution 2024-18-T amending the budget by $25,000 to increase contracted and other services line item, recommend approval. Consideration of Resolution 2024-19-T recommending approval of an on-premises tasting room permit for cultured ferment company, recommend approval. Consideration of Contractors' application for payment number one to Elmers for Stone Ridge PRV, recommend approval. Consideration of Contractors' application for payment number two to Molon Excavating for Silver Lake Road sanitary sewer extension, recommend approval. Consideration of Beta TCHC Transit Oriented Mixed Use Developmental Development Water and Sewer Extension Closeout and Turnover Documents, recommend approval. Consideration of Bridges 45 Phase 4 South 22 Water and Sewer Extension Closeout and Turnover Documents, recommend approval. Consideration of Burmley Hills Site Condo Sanitary Sewer and Water Main Extension Closeout and Turnover Documents, recommend approval.
Is there any member of the board who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar for discussion? Molly?
I'd like to take F off.
Is there any member of the public who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar for discussion? Or staff? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item F.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of letter F.
Support.
We have a motion and support to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item F. Are there any questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Barsha?
Yes.
Augustine Alley?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Schmuckle?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes. And Molly?
Okay. This resolution has to do with disposal of some records, and I just want to have it put into the minutes that people will still be able to access those records. And how they can do that doesn't really say that. Just after three years, we're going to be destroying any physical ones, but we'll, I'm assuming, keep it on some kind of a...
We are, this is to remove them from our website.
Okay. Just from the website?
Yeah, we're creating a new website, and they're downloading the information from the old one, and it's enormous, like, so they would, they don't, they don't think we need to keep them forever, obviously, but we do have to set a policy.
Okay. Will we still be able to go onto our website, click on minute, on meetings, and...
Get the last three years' meetings. If you want more than that, you can contact the township.
Okay. That's what I needed. Okay. Thank you.
Would you care to make a motion?
Then I would make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2024-17-T.
Support.
We have a motion and support to adopt Resolution 2024 dash, what was that again? 17-T. Are there any questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Augustine Alley?
Yes.
Barsha?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Schmuckle?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes. Next is correspondence. We have a timeline of the executive recruitment services for township manager from Amy's Cell. And they have a process. We went through it when we found our new chief. And they started out with interviewing both department heads and board members, so you should have some contact from then to ask some questions about what you're looking for in a manager. Yes.
I contacted the organization and told her that I had interest in seeking that position, to not include me in future correspondence.
Okay.
For transparency, so, just so you know.
Good call.
Yep.
All right. Next is reports. And we will start out with the county commissioner's report.
Good evening, everyone. Brad Jewett, Vice Chair of Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners, District 4.
Lauren Flynn, District 2.
I guess I'll start out real quick here. Last week, we did approve a lease agreement between the Grand Traverse Commission on Aging and the area, area agency on aging. The Commission on Aging will be moving all their front street location, and they'll be in the same offices with the area agency on aging, and that should happen within the next 30 to 60 days. We did approve the 2024 tax rate request. Since the last time we reported, since we had a meeting last time, we did, we had the county did go ahead and move forward with the, doing the due diligence and trying to complete the transaction of purchasing the GoRec property. Last week, we also did approve for our emergency management department, what's referred to as a CRD, but as a compact deploy, compact rapid deployable device to where, if they're in a remote area where there's no cellular or internet-type services or anything, that we can deploy this and have them services available to, to people within a 600 feet or half-mile area. We have been going through the ARPA request, and we're solely but surely, more of them are getting fulfilled. Some of the two big projects, one is for Kingsley for lead water service replacement, and one in our district is the water sewer extension for Francisco's up there, which looks like has been completed, and they, several of us drive by there, but it looks like Molon did a really nice job on that project, so. We did accept the 2023 Treasurer Annual Report, and we did approve what I refer to as the cleanup of our address ordinance. There were some conflicting things in the old ordinances and everything, but some of it was like street and road naming, to make sure we're not getting the same names used consecutively throughout the county and stuff, and some of it was just the cleanup of addressing of certain address, certain locations and everything like that, so that's all I have.
Also, since we've seen you last, we've authorized our biannual community survey. With this time, we will be adding more custom questions, and as a board, we will be deciding on those. Those will be a little more detailed, more focused on things that are affecting our community. We also appointed two new appointees, Carol Crawford to DHHS Board, as well as Crystal Frost Anderson to the Northern Lakes Community Health Board, so we're excited to have those two folks join those important boards. Also, Michelle Howard presented to us last week about the library millage that will be on the August ballot. I really feel that's very important to our community, because we need great libraries throughout our counties for everyone to enjoy. We do not have our usual meeting on the third Wednesday on June 19th this month due to a safety training, so the county building will be closed that day for that, for staff to go through the safety training, but we will have a special meeting on June 26th, so we'll be back to normal hours on that day.
Any questions or comments for either one of us? Wow, you guys must want to get home, too. Like always, our contact, both of our contact is on the county website, and you guys have phone numbers, too, but if you have any questions, comments, concerns, please reach out to either one of us or both of us. And with that being said, I may go see the people at Blair.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the construction report.
Good evening, everyone. Jennifer Graham, Gordy Frazier. In your packet, it's actually the report from May. And I guess just to go through some highlights of some progress on projects, for your perspective, Stone Ridge PRV, I've already gone through and reviewed shop drawings, reviewed it as well with DPW, just to get their consensus, and so that item has been ordered, hence reflected in the pay application that you guys approved on the consent calendar. So, we're just waiting for that to get delivered, and it's going to be here in a couple months, so, excited. I know DPW definitely thanks you to get that PRV replaced and provide an added level of safety for their staff. When conducting inspections at those locations, as your county commissioners indicated, yes, Silver Lake Sewer has been complete. Molon did do a great job. Punch List has already been done as well, so I'm working with them on final closeout paperwork, final pay application, things of that nature. So, I appreciate everybody's patience in that, and then, so I can go ahead and get the ARPA reimbursement submitted as well to the county and get some replenishment of funds there. A few other things. In your packet is the McCray Booster Station, so we'll talk about that later on in the agenda. Capital improvement projects, as you guys recall, last year authorized us to submit to Eagle for drinking water. State revolving fund for loan slash grant opportunities for a substantial amount of water system capital improvement projects. That project plan was, again, due June of this year. As we didn't score that well last year, there was a substantial amount of applicants due to the ARPA federal funding that was available. So, I took the initiative, worked with Supervisor Corn to get his signature and resubmit that by the deadline. So, hopefully, we may see some relaxation of applicants and potentially get some better scoring for us and opportunity for funding for some of these projects. River East, bathroom has been ordered, as you guys are probably aware. AJ's, I'm just working with them on contracts, shop drawings, and trying to get a schedule nailed down from them on some delivery items and get some movement on that project soon. Copper Ridge Trailhead, a layout cost estimate by Mark McGuire in my office, he worked on that, and I shared that with Planning Department a couple weeks ago for them to review over and get feedback. The North Trail for, out at the Commons, that contract, this board executed, and our survey crews going to be mobilized on site under this week, early next week, to finish up topo, so we can work on design for that. Barlow South Airport Sidewalk, topo's been done, and the design is about 50% complete. So, as soon as I have a plan set in front of me for QA, I'll schedule time with staff to sit down and kind of go through that layout and get that firmed up. Lot of utility plans you guys saw on your consent agenda for closeout. I'm finally, Andrea in my office is like Jamie in yours. We have to track down these people so we can get a lot of these projects closed out for easements and maintenance bonds, so I'm happy to report that, yes, ridges, beta, and Burmley Hills have been both closed out, and appreciate you guys approving that. The only other update on plan reviews is Wendy Hills. Finally made it through, I think, our fifth plan review and got that submitted for permit, finally, so that one is, was at a good place. Some stormwater reviews coming in, and probably the biggest thing for you guys is the Community Energy Grant did get approved. I shared that email with Supervisor Corn, and so we're just waiting on the agreement to come through from Eagle to fund the boiler and the AC unit replacement, so.
Nice.
That was exciting, so I appreciate you guys letting me help with that and have a win, so. Little things.
I just got an easy question. You said, "Get ready for Q and A." What's Q and A?
Oh, quality assurance and quality control. Yeah. Yeah. I'm sorry. No, no. That's, yeah. It's an internal process that we have, so we try to do a good job on our QA, but I will entertain any questions you guys have for me.
Looks like you're off the hook.
Well, I'll be back, but thank you.
Next, from the Grand Traverse County Sheriff's Officer. Lieutenant?
Hello, Roy Rasko of the Sheriff's Department. I was just looking the stats over from this month, from last month, they're actually the same or less, which is odd. The only thing I can suspect is that a lot of the guys were away in training, and a lot of the guys are starting to burn vacation time, which is good. It's been pretty busy. Over May, over the month of May, 46 citations were issued. They handled 84 traffic crashes, and that's injury accidents and just regular fender benders. They had six OWIRS compared to last month, where they had nine. Just to touch base, the school resource officer is finishing up. I feel Deputy Hendges did a great job out there this past school year. I think the school was very pleasant, or all the feedback I got back from the school was great. Jess stayed busy doing lockdown drills, truancy investigations, threats, assaults. She stayed busy the whole school year. Once she wasn't there, the guys, when asked, would go up and make a presence at the school, and I think it made a difference. So Jess stayed really busy. All of the township spots are filled at this point. They have been probably for the last two and a half, three months. That's great. They all have been working real close with one another, and it seems like they all have specialties, so they're all busy deputies, whether they're on accident reconstruction, evidence tax, or if they're FTOs, so they're all staying pretty busy. And Jess, the school resource officer, will go back onto the schedule, and she'll help me out doing special events and filling in for vacations and things like that during the week. I had plans for those guys to get on the bikes. That hasn't happened yet, we're hoping, the next couple of weeks, but it's, they've been busy. And then Deborah, Deputy St. Croix and Deputy Anderson have an opportunity to go to Reed School here next week, so they'll be doing that. It's three days, they'll be off the schedule, and it's an excellent school, it's in Grayling. And then, last Saturday night, I was on call, so I got called in the morning, and the Depts, Garfield Township Depts, and the whole crew, and some of the city guys were chasing some kids around in Meadow Lane Trailer Park that were breaking into cars, so that seems like that's the hot thing to do right now. And they ended up taking five juvenile kids into custody and, and solving a lot of larceny from auto complaints, so.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you much. Next item is the GT Metro Fire Report.
Hey. Good evening. I'd like to start with the NFR's reports. If you look at the first page of your report, just condensed the page here to provide your Garfield stats and the overall metro stats in one doc, in one graph. So, starting with that, our largest number of calls, as usual, are medical assists, EMS crews, with 234 for Garfield for the month of May, in respect to the 346 for all of Metro. As you look down, we had a number of canceled and en route type calls, that's where we're called for assistance and disregarded, when maybe another unit is on scene, MMR EMS, or good intent type call where we might get canceled. Emergency Medical Services, other, those additional calls, we're looking at 10 and 31 there, and then moving down into motor vehicle accidents, and then just our false alarms, and then just a number of different call types there. Overall, again, the totals, 322 for Garfield as opposed to 510 for Metro. If you look at the next page with our pie charts, first graph is our overall incidents by station for the month of May, again, representing that total of 510, with Station 12 coming in 92 calls, 18%. Station 11 here in Garfield, 136 calls, 27%. That is in comparison to Station 1, one of our other busier, busier stations, 143 calls and 28% there. Next chart breaks down our incidents by township, with Garfield, again, representing that 322 of the 510 at 63%. Move on to our EMS complaints for the month of May. This graph, you'll have two pages. You'll start with the overall GT Metro stats, and then the second page will be your Garfield exclusive stats. Reason, I looked into combining these into one sheet, but the identifying the priorities makes it a little difficult to get it on one page, so. Looking at our chief complaints of falls for a total for Metro of 80 for the month, and as opposed to Garfield Township at 48, again, being one of our largest incident types in regards to EMS complaints. We're still targeting, we still have our fire prevention targeting, fall safety education, I'll cover that a little bit further when I get through the reports. But as you go through difficulty breathing, cardiac issues, abdominal pain, et cetera, medical alarms are our next most frequent calls. You can see those stats there, and then we just kind of drop down into the single digits with just some of your basic emergencies, diabetic emergency, hemorrhage, et cetera, And again, if there's some specific information that you are curious about or you'd like to request, I'll make sure that we get that modified and we can present that to you. In regards to just some of the highlights from, from Metro in the previous month, we looked at, we did update our HIPAA policy, that's something that was posted on our website. Just, it's a notice of our privacy practices, it's just disclosure, so we updated the policy, it's posted on our website. We are administratively, we're, we're continuing to work on our budget for 2025. We do have a finance committee meeting scheduled for next Thursday to review a draft and have some discussion on that prior to our next board meeting. The administration is also attending a number of meetings at some of the upcoming events. I've attended a number of meetings for the Cherry Fest, the airshow. There's been a couple of meetings, as a matter of fact, we have another one tomorrow in anticipation of the Ironman that's proposed for 2025, so obviously, we're monitoring that in regards to any traffic concerns or access concerns for us when it regards to delivering our services. Grants, we informed you previously, we do have a couple of grants with FEMA out there that probably be, might start hearing, or maybe at the end of the summer, in terms of the AFG grant and for Safer Grant, which would be for staffing. But in addition to that, we did put in a 2% grant with the Grand Traverse Band for the replacement of a Lucas chest compression device. One of ours actually went bad, so we did put in for that to see if we can go ahead and get that replaced. Another unique opportunity that did come up is the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity in conjunction with the State Firefighters Union, I think did a little bit of lobbying, wanted to provide additional protections for firefighters throughout the state. There's a lot of firefighters that don't have that NFPA compliant second set of turnout gear. So, they found $15 million for this grant, and it's exclusively for full-time fire departments with purchasing a second set of turnout gear. One of our lieutenants, Lieutenant Thomas, was monitoring it closely, kept us informed on it. So, we did submit an application for that to hopefully get 30 sets of gear, which would be over $97,000. So, we got our fingers crossed on that one. Again, it's not a common grant. This was a unique opportunity that came up, so we're hoping that we can be successful with that. Additionally, last week, we had four candidates graduate from the RTC Fire School, so we're pretty proud of them. Three of those candidates did a role in EMT School, which will begin this summer. Also, last week, we concluded interviews for our full-time firefighter testing. The process produced four candidates. That'll be added to our register, so it should give us five people on our eligibility list. So, the number originally started with about 19 applicants. We got down to about six that were there for the physical agility, so winding up with about five on the list, you know, love to have more, but we do have numbers there. Right now, there are no openings, so it should suffice for us. Fire prevention is busy as usual. Our inspectors are working at the hotels, motels, our food service, public assemblies at this time. We also have our Chief Belchers working on plan review permit fee schedule to update and revise that. That's going to be up for discussion with our board. He's also working on new town... He's also working on new township fire prevention ordinances for adoption of the 2024 International Fire Code with local amendments. So I know he's doing some preliminary work on that. He may have already contacted your building department just to have some conversations on that, but that'll be something that'll be ongoing. Our Safe Neighborhoods program is in full effect, full swing. Each station and Fire Prevention Bureau getting two hours a week in assigned neighborhoods, get out there, knock doors, you know, provide and install smoke detectors for residents that need those. So that's moving along very well. And our public education is busy as always. Jen's out there. She conducted her Matter of Balance class. She did eight sessions at the YMCA West with a total of 107 participants. So that's a good thing, again, when you look at those EMS complaints with that number of about 80 people getting, we're getting those calls for falls. It's a good thing to kind of target that. In addition, she completed CPR classes. We have another one coming up at Station 11 on the 18th of June. And then also, she did some more car seat fitting stations at Station 11, then also at City Fire Station 2, so. That concludes my report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Chuck?
Yes.
MMR is not on the, on the...
Sorry?
MMR is not on the agenda.
Oh.
Okay. Make sure.
Next report is from the Planning Department.
Good evening. Our report's in your packet, just three items. One, you'll notice in our report, we're tracking now our administrative site plan reviews that are done under the Planning Department, so you'll see those listed in there along with the Planning Commission activities. Tomorrow evening in this room will be the public hearing. It's the final public hearing on the master plan, and so the Planning Commission will be taking action and providing recommendation, and that will be coming then next to the Township Board for its consideration. And then, third and last item I have is, on your desk is, we revised the survey that we're sending out for the branding and website project, so we've made some changes. We eliminated a couple of the questions in there. So please take a chance to look at it one more time, and if you have any comments, let us know. We're hoping to get that out next week.
Any questions for John? The Parks and Rec Report is in writing. And the Personnel Committee Report. We have two people to give the Personnel Committee Report. Chet and Chris.
All right, I'll go first. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see everyone again. So as you know, we started the process in March. I found a new building official because Carl, as he said, he wanted to retire. And so a job was posted, deadline was April 23rd. We did receive 40 applicants, which I thought was very good. Of those, eight met the state qualifications. As you know, to be a building official, you had to meet some state qualifications. So we had a lot of people applying who were in the building trades but did not meet the qualification. You had to be a planner, an inspector, or be a current building official. But we did get eight, which I thought was a very good number. A committee was formed of the supervisor, the clerk, and trustee Barshif. We decided we're going to interview all eight of them. We did phone interviews, got that down, list from eight to four. And then Carl joined us for those. We interviewed four people. We were debating which ones to bring forward, because there were some good candidates. Two of them had personnel issues with either their family, or their spouses' wives, and so forth, and they had to withdraw regretfully. And then Carl came up with a different plan. And Chris, do you want to talk about what the proposed plan is now?
Yeah, he does a great job, as you know, and he, I think he'd rather, at his stage in his life, not work full-time. So there was discussion amongst the Personnel Committee about allowing, or potentially him working part-time as a building official, and then hiring a full-time inspector, plan reviewer. So Carl would, in the fall, receive a certification, and then work through the end of the year, where at that point, he could go part-time. And then Chet could help us find the building official full-time, you know, throughout the fall, and have that ready to go first of the year. So we felt like that would work. We were able to retain Carl, who's done a great job. We don't lose him. And I think it's a win-win for everybody, so that's what we've discussed on doing, and we think it's a good direction.
I think everybody here would be pleased to hear that Carl's staying.
Yes, absolutely. So you're not going to be doing hiring until January 1st, then?
So Rich is still planning on leaving in September.
Okay.
So we'll be, we will start actively looking for a inspector slash plan reviewer. And Chet, who had committed to seeing this process through, is going to do that as part of the original.
There's no extra cost or anything.
Okay.
The way I structured my proposal is through the end of the process. I think this is part of the process. There's been a change of plan, but I think it's a good plan. We kind of thought about what is the best options for the township. You really want to get the right person with the right personality. The technical skills are critical. It's important, but you really need the right person with the right skills that could blend in here in Garfield Township. And we had some issues about some people that applied. I mean, there were a lot of good people that applied. They all had the technical skills. They all met the stick requirements, but can we find the right person with the right personality to work with the contractors here? And Carl came through and then kind of, I think, talked about the options. We met, talked numerous times about the options, and came up with this plan, which I think is a win-win.
Absolutely. To have Carl still here, it's a win-win.
Yeah.
Yep.
It is. Great.
If there are no objections, that's the way we will go.
No objection. That's great.
So we'll take a break for a couple months, and then get together as a committee and come up with a timeline, and post a job, and start the process, and go from there.
Great. Thanks, Chet.
So I'll be here for a while with you then, I guess.
Good. Thank you. Next is the Clerk's Report.
I've submitted the Clerk's Report in writing, and Nise, you had a question on that one item last week, and then I answered it in the, did you see that in the budget amendment that I made?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any other questions on?
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
And we are getting real busy in the Clerk's Office. Ballots should be here in two to three weeks, and we'll be getting those out. We're training with the Bureau of Elections yesterday here in Garfield Township, and we're moving forward, getting ready, getting busy.
Interesting election year. Any questions for Laney?
Hey. This is the Supervisor's Report. I had a breakfast meeting with Dan Barron and the new director of Goodwill's Housing, and he's a ex-marine. So he seems to have a very aggressive persona, and I, he's made, he's going to look again at the issue we had with Carson Square, where they were, they cleaned it up partially, but it's still not.
Right.
As we would call it acceptable, so he's going to try to bring that group into compliance. Couple meetings with the Grand Travers Economic Development Corporation, Travers Connect, and most of the larger municipalities. And it's trying to figure out how we are going to work together to bring more economic development to the area. There's been some disagreements, but we're all hanging in there and working together.
When they talk economic development, are they talking like industrial, like factories or big businesses, or what are they talking, kind of?
Pretty much everything, but I think the, not so much the smokestack kind of industries, but, you know, the high-tech industries are, would be the, our first preference. There are a lot of people living in this area with some great talents who are, you know, are working towards these things. I think we're fortunate to have some of them involved in the Cherryland Project, so we're happy about that. We also would like to see, you know, more retail, recreation. That's turning out to be, I think, the cornerstone of our new development is recreation.
Are you looking at some kinds of incentives? If someone were to bring a business here, let's say they're making a widget for a jet plane, and they wanted to move a whole factory here, is this the group that's going to work with them to bring whatever incentives they need from the community to have that kind of employment here?
Yes. Yeah, and I think that there's a recognition that part of the issue isn't just businesses, it's employees. People want to come here, and there's no place for their working, their workers to live. That makes it impossible.
Right.
And if they're young and they have children, and you're a two-income family, it's hard, it's really hard.
It's really hard.
So those are, you know, we're not going to get involved, I think, in opening these, but we will encourage them, and we will do what we can to help. That's, the school systems, four school systems are working together on the property in Blair, near their elementary school, to create a apartment complex for school employees, because they're all in the same boat.
Yeah.
It's Interlock and TBA ISD, Traverse City and St. Francis, or I should say TC Catholic. So that's, you know, those are, those are some of the solutions that people are finding. But it's, there was a lot of yelling about, we have to lower our standards for zoning, and that was where we got a little bit of pushback.
Lower our standards for zoning?
Yeah. And one developer in particular was complaining about the process for the workforce housing on McCray there, at McCray and 31, how long it took. But I know it was quite a process, and we worked hard, John worked very hard to put that together, but they just see how long it took. They don't see the work. So that's, that was what's going on there. The Ironman, we've been to several meetings already with them.
See, I've got that in my other business.
And it's, the good news is, we have the fire department, the sheriff's department, and Greg Bird there. Because at one point, they were talking about shutting down South Airport on a Sunday for seven hours.
Oh, that's what I heard, too.
And that, that went away. So they're going to, we're talking about, they call it a lollipop, where you go in and out on the stick, and then you out around the lollipop and come back. And that would require an enormous amount of time for South Airport Road. Now that's going to be more of a big, wide loop that'll come in a different direction instead of South Airport. So going out early in the morning on bikes, everybody else scoot through there quick, and the road will be opened back up. Now they just have to figure out where they're going after that. So it's...
So South Airport isn't going to be shut down?
For a short time, early in the morning, on Sunday.
Okay.
It's...
That's still your main thoroughfare for your emergency vehicles, too?
Emergency vehicles always get a pass. If, there'll be police at the intersection, and if an emergency vehicle comes through, they stop the bikes, and the emergency vehicle goes through.
All right. So this is going to be for '25, though?
This is, yeah. We're still a year away.
Yeah, yeah.
More than a year.
Good, yeah.
Lots of planning going on there.
So is most of it's going to be going through Garfield Township, then?
No, it's going to end up out in Kingsley, out in Paradise.
Oh, okay.
And then circle back in, and I think through like the Four Mile area. There's some question about how you get down off of Four Mile and start heading to the west, but...
It's the Arbutus Lake Triangle, where you get lost out there.
People never come back. I've seen it happen. Had a minute of discussion with Metro Fire and the DPW and City and ourselves about the commons. They're, they don't have enough water pressure to fight a fire at the barns. And so we're looking at different alternatives to get water pressure there, and we have, we have pressure nearby, so that will be part of that solution. But they're, they want to get the second barn started. They have, they have a grant for that, but it's ARPA money, so it has to be committed by the end of the year, so they need some definite answers. You have a building official on here, but I think we've been through that pretty well. Susan Johnson, the gal on Cass Road, who has been a long-term problem that went in front of, well, she was supposed to go in front of Judge Hamlin.
The animal one, with all the animals in cages?
Yeah. She was supposed to go in front of Judge Hamlin and did not show up. So he, I think he did a very good job. He explained to us exactly what he was doing and why he had to do it, you know, what the, what the law was, what the courts have ruled. And when a defendant's not there, you have to give them every option to. So he said, but there was a preponderance of evidence from the township that there's an issue there that hasn't been addressed, and so he is, he has set a deadline for her, and that's, we've been through this before, but this is in Circuit Court, and I think it's a little more sticking. So we...
When is her deadline?
Her deadline, I think, is, it's roughly 75 days.
And when was this hearing?
It was just a couple of days ago.
Okay. And what does she have to do?
She has to clean up.
Just comply with it?
She has to get the...
Bring it into compliance?
Yep. And we're hopeful, because I, like I said, it has been a long-term process. We've got a lot of money involved in legal, and we have...
And the neighbors are...
Very unhappy neighbors.
Very unhappy.
And I can't blame them.
Yep. So that's the Supervisor's Report, unless there's any other questions?
I can take that off, because you answered my question there.
And we will move on to new business. Item A is concurrence of replacing the existing asphalt trail along US 31 using ARPA funds. And John, you were involved in this early. Why don't you take it?
Sure. As you may know, TJ Maxx is moving out of the Grand Traverse Mall and is relocating at the former Bed Bath &amp; Beyond store, next to Michael's. And as part of that process, they have to meet our certain ordinance requirements. One of the things that we've been working to is to make sure that they're complying with our zoning ordinance when it comes to sidewalks, bike paths, trails, that type of thing. So it was evaluated, the condition of the trail out front of Coles and Michael's and TJ Maxx, which is all part of that same development, was in need of repair, and ultimately was determined needed to be upgraded, replaced essentially. So they were going through and had, Global Asphalt was out there, and knowing that we have a portion of that trail in front of Kids Creek Park, which is in need of repair as well, we asked them if they would give us a price estimate to repair that. The portion, there's a map in your packet, the yellow portion's about 437 feet. What they'll do is replace, and they gave us an estimate of 13,480. We did check with Tart Trails, who does a lot of trails. They had some recent prices from Elmer's and Molon, so in comparison, a price per foot cost was roughly about $31. In comparison, Elmer's was 70, and Molon was 130.
Whoa.
So we thought we would take advantage of this, since they're already out there tearing it up, and see if they could replace that, and... uh, tearing it up and see if they could replace that, uh, and have a considerable cost savings. It was gonna need to be repaired at some point, uh, so we thought this would be a lot better to do it now since they're already out there on site.
Do we have the ARPA funds for this?
We, you mean, yeah, we have a lot of contingency. We have plenty to cover it.
Okay.
Yep.
Is there a motion on that?
Yeah, I really said the, uh, the finance committee that, um, reviewed the situation, they needed a decision right away. And we thought the opportunity was such that we would go that way, but then ask the board for concurrence just, uh, as a courtesy.
Hard to believe they're bidding all the same thing with that big of a spread.
Yeah. I was like, maybe they're not, maybe they're gonna fail to do it, but I don't think so there. It seems to be a.
Okay, good.
I make a motion of the concurrence of the replacing existing asphalt trail along US 31 using ARPA funds. Be approved?
Support.
Right. We have a motion in support. Two, approve the contract to Global Asphalt. Are there any questions or comments?
To John and whoever worked on this, thank you so much for checking on additional quotes and also being efficient with doing it. You know, you, obviously you save some money by having the company come in there when they're already gonna be in the area. So, appreciate that.
Sure thing. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote please?
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Barshaf?
Yes.
Gustanelli?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Yes.
That is unanimous. Thank you. Next item is consideration of Gordy Frazier's proposal for Ridgewood Court Water Main Extension.
Ridge View.
Ridge, View Court. It's just mint in my mouth, makes me talk. Um, are there any questions regarding this? Now, would someone care to make a motion?
I mean, I won't do that.
Yeah? You wanna do that?
I wanna do that.
What's the, uh, so it's going to be paid for out of what?
It's to be paid for out of the water fund.
Okay. Well, then, I will make a motion that we, uh, approve the proposal for Ridge View Court Water Main Extension from Gordy Frazier.
Support.
We have a motion in support to approve the engineering for the Ridge View Water Main Extension for $365,000. Are there any questions or comments? A roll call vote please.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Barshaf?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Korn?
Yes.
Did you say 360,000?
How about 33,000?
How about 33,000?
I just thought.
Yeah.
John first taking notes.
Oh, I might have been looking at the McCray Booster Station.
You may have been.
I feel much better. Now we will talk about consideration of Gordy Frazier's proposal for the McCray Booster Station for 365,000.
Okay. Again, would this come out of the water fund?
Yes, it would. Do you have any questions for our engineer?
Is that the water fund or?
Okay, I'll make the motion, um, that we approve, uh, Gordy Frazier's proposal for the McCray Booster Station in the amount of $365,000 to come out of the water fund.
Support.
We have a motion in support. Any questions?
Yeah, question. Um, you and I had discussed and talked about the, so we've got these two that the engineering came through, proposals for water extensions and a pump change out. Where are we at with Olson's water to their property? Is this kind of the format that we would be using? I guess I'm a little bit lost in the process.
Please.
A gentleman in the audience, I noticed too, that may further elaborate, but, um, consistent with the discussion and resolution of this board and, um, what we've talked about in the past, and I tried to provide a quick synopsis, but, um, the intent and decision, obviously there is acknowledgement that there's a great potential for development on the 190 acres and then other parcels, whoops, excuse me, along that route. Um, so this township board acknowledging that, um, was very willful in making the investment to provide, um, the costs for engineering and construction related to the booster station to provide both domestic and fire flow. And then consistent with all of our other development projects, the understanding is the develop, the developer takes on the ownership for all the water main extensions that are associated from that booster to their, um, development, the limits of their development and then any respective onsite piping. So that's a cost that they're incurring is the transmission lines and service lines. So I have already, and probably, oh shoot, for the last six months, if not more, had back and forth discussions with Olson's Foundation and their engineer, um, related to that matter and as far as what we're looking for, expectations. And we actually have a meeting scheduled for Friday as well, just to, now that this contract is approved, which, thank you, um, we can start talking about timelines, expectations of each other and coordination.
Okay. And then will they get like, uh, just tell me if I'm wrong on this. You estimate it, right? But didn't, then do you go for physical bids from the installers to confirm that? I, cause I think from what I've heard from Brad, they're trying to budget for numbers for spring of '25.
Sure. So I, yes, just to help facilitate the original discussion, I, over a year ago, created a, a general cost estimate for what they could expect, both for, well, what you could expect for the booster and then what they could expect for the transmission line. Um, so that is, yes, a cost estimate, just as it sounds, but then once their engineer starts finalizing design, they'll have layouts, alignment, total linear footage that they can then coordinate with their contractor to do the installation and then get, uh, actual more firm cost estimates. I'm happy to help them through that process, but, uh, that would be the next step is, is you would do, you know, an initial cost estimate and then a final, once the design is close to a point where you're submitting it for permits, you know, you have a better understanding of what you can anticipate. Cause they've done soil boring, survey, you know, things of that nature. So hopefully that answers your question.
When you said their contractors, I guess I'm thinking that we.
They're gonna be.
They're gonna pay for the water from the booster station to their property line.
Correct.
And then from there, they have all their inner waters.
Right.
That, once they got their layout, would be done. And you would be involved in that too, because you're our engineer.
Right. Just like any other project, like when we did, um, Beta TC Housing, they, the developer hires their own engineer, uh, their own contractor, but they're, we're there on your behalf doing all the constr, full-time construction inspection and monitoring and testing and working with their, um, respective contractor and engineer on creating record drawings and just verification that is built to your standards. So we're providing the boots-on-the-ground inspection.
Okay. And then are you able to give them kind of a springtime bid of what it may cost in the spring?
Yeah, I can help them with that or, um, you know, their engineer.
I know the numbers are changing like monthly.
Yeah. Well, they're, they're stabilizing, um, but they're still high.
Building trades aren't.
Yeah. I, I am seeing pipe prices stabilize.
Are they? Okay.
Yeah, which is very promising. We're seeing more bidders, um, and even interest from downstate or up north. So that, at least some more competition, just like you saw with the, uh, trail there, you know, a big disparity in pricing depending on their availability, I think is what's driving it.
May I ask him if what I asked is sufficing for what he's wanting?
We are meeting with the project engineer.
And you guys, okay, good.
On Friday.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're just.
And just out of curiosity, when I was coming in tonight, there's a hydrant to the east of the booster station. Is that just a lead to that corner and that's it?
Correct. Yep.
Interesting. I just know, I'd never even seen that fire hydrant. I must have been oblivious.
Yeah, there's, there's always been expectations and availability to extend it to the south. The problem is, is we don't have the topography to, you know, we can provide 20 pounds of pressure.
Is that where it would come from? Is that hydrant or does it come from the station? I guess I'm just curious.
Well, the station hasn't been built yet. So we're gonna be tying into that corner.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Cause your tank right there at McCray, it's buried. Um, you know, we could put a big elevated tank in, but that price would look a lot different. We don't, we don't wanna do that. We wanna work with what we have. So, and it's gonna be good. So I'm excited.
Home's a lot cheaper.
They are.
Yes.
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
No, great questions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. No, we, that was, he's got a ticket, that was a question.
So, do we have a motion on the floor?
Yes, we do.
And a second?
Yes, we do.
Are there any other questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote please?
Yes. Agustinelli?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Barshaf?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Korn?
Yes.
Last but not least, under new business, consideration of a new contract with MMR. And we have, um, I feel like MMR has had a rough time getting their feet under them and, but they are growing their own, as we like to say. They have their own school and they're training, um, people to be EMTs and paramedics. They, uh, recently committed to buy a building on Park Drive in Garfield Township, uh, which is further proof of their commitment to this community. Um, and I, they're running remarkably efficient operation. I think, um, I've talked to some people who are familiar with the city's ALS program that's evolving and they hired two EMTs who want to become paramedics, um, and they both quit. They have three paramedics who are retiring this year.
Oh, nice.
So, it's a rough world out there.
Absolutely.
And I, and I do feel like we have a good partner in MMR. Um, I think the contract is sufficient to cover what we're looking for. They will be a good partner with the other agencies in the neighborhood.
How long is this for?
This is for the rest of my life.
The rest of your life?
It's on the last page.
At least the rest of my.
I couldn't find it. Thank you. Thank you.
I was looking for that today and I found it.
Thanks, Steve. I couldn't find it when I was looking over it.
It's under XXX.
Yeah, I see that now.
Page 10.
I would make a motion that we, um, go into contract for Garfield Township Ambulance Service with MMR. M-M-R.
Thank you.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any questions or comments?
Was there an out clause that with written notice for like 90 days?
I think it's more than 90 days, but there is an out clause. Yes.
Okay. I just, the only reason why I bring this up is, you know, our new fire chief, if he's got plans down the road where those services will be delivered differently from a, a third-party contractor, maybe through Metro, I just don't want to hinder that. So.
Yeah.
And, and not that's, I mean, that's not on the table right now, but I just, it's a four-year contract and, so.
Yeah. I think there's, um, I've had some conversations with the chief as well. Um, we're not, we're not out of alignment there.
Perfect. One quick question. When I read through this and maybe I missed it, it's got that MMR is providing the exclusive mobile basic and advanced life support. What if we have to call, are we allowed to call in outside ambulances if needed?
Absolutely. That's, that's in there as.
Is it in there? Did I miss it?
Well, they, they commit to.
Based on 911?
Mutual aid.
Okay. 911's ability to do that.
If they go, if they have to go into East Bay, they will go into East Bay.
Okay.
If they have to go into Blair, they'll go into Blair.
That was the only question I had. I just, I didn't see it and I thought maybe I'll.
They have, and times MMR runs out of rigs and then East Bay comes in or.
They have box, or what, was it box coverage or whatever it is? They move around and cover each other? Yeah.
Perhaps we'll get this from the expert.
I was waiting for you to say from the horse's mouth. Amy Fairchild with MMR. Uh, to answer your question, we have mutual aid agreements with all surrounding agencies here. Um, quite often, I may be happy to pull this data for you. We actually provide mutual aid more than we receive it. Those, but as soon as I say that, the roles get reversed for a day or two. Um, we have very good working relationship with Metro, with East Bay, Long Lake, Blair. Um, we help Blair out in East Bay probably the most often and it's very much mutual for both of us. Um, 911 Center here does proximity-based dispatching. They went to that about six months ago now. So if I say, hey, if we're out of rigs, we got, you know, we're all busy tied up right now, they grab the next closest one. And it's based on Google mapping system, not how the bird flies, which is much helpful. And we get the next closest rig. So if we're getting pulled into East Bay, it's because we're showing it's next available.
Good.
Also originally, um, supervisor, we had talked about a five-year contract. We can extend that date or we can stick with the four years as well. Um, I didn't catch that when I sent that to you, um, when we were revising that. So either option is we're open to that, but I wanted to let you know.
Okay. Thank you.
If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Doing a good job.
Yes, you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We're excited to be moving closer here to, into Garfield Township. They said six months or less. So.
Good, good.
Um, also to answer your question, um, there's a 90-day clause, um, for, to move out or there's a 180-day clause. We've honored, um, different ones depending on what the contract that we're signing with, what they prefer. Typically, um, it's a 90-day on either end.
Thank you.
Yep, not a problem.
Are they in that district, John, of where you buy the building and whatever development you do into it, the capital gain is kept? What's that district we had?
The opportunity zone?
Are you in the, are they in the opportunity zone?
I don't think so.
Park Drive?
I don't think that side of South Airport is in it.
Yeah. On the wrong side of that road?
Yes.
Okay.
Story of my life.
Yeah. Darn. You should've. It's too bad.
If I can celebrate with you guys just a little bit, we had three paramedics complete their national registry, passed the Michigan State testing, and they are now in training with us.
Nice.
As of today. So we've been, we've been throwing parties today.
That's great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions for Amy before we vote? Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion and a second to approve the contract? Could I have a roll call vote please?
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Barshaf?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Korn?
Yes. That is unanimous. Thank you. The conclusion of new business takes us to, I don't know.
Public comment.
Takes us to public comment. Is there any member of the public who'd care to speak at this point?
I think they've all spoken.
Yes, and done well.
You answered my question.
Is there any other business to come before the board?
You answered my question in the other business. Thank you.
Very welcome.
Doc, are we supposed to fill this out? Was on our.
No, it's just, that's the one he was telling you about. That's.
Yeah. And if you have any comments, please share them with John.
Okay.
And, um, I have some other business I would like to discuss. And I would like to make a motion to go into a closed session under section 131H of the Freedom of Information Act. The township may go into closed session to discuss the context of this memo under section 8H of the Open Meetings Act. So, it is a, uh, opinion from Mr. Howard that I would like to share with you to.
I support that motion.
All right. We have a motion and support. We need a two-thirds majority to go into closed session. I'll need a roll call vote please.
So Korn?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Barshaf?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
All right. The records show that we are going into closed session at 7:09. The record show that we are going into closed session at 7:09.